Good evening. It is Monday, July 19th, 2021. This is the Carney-Bourne-Waltherman Meeting. Calling me in order, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Jim Eldridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody has turned to Dan Holt, and you do have a call.
Thank you. We'll start off with the consent agenda board. You see the consent agenda presented. Do you have any questions or are there any discussion on the consent agenda this evening?
I'm excited about the siding, new windows, the old firehouse. It will look wonderful.
Yes, and I really appreciate Plie Jim stepping up and providing the material. So very, very kind of them. If there are no questions or any other discussion, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. A couple items I want to discuss this evening is first, I want to say thanks to the Carney Police Department for solving the Carney Lions Park vandalism case. And I want to also publicly thank the anonymous donors who contributed $2,500 of the reward fund, which did provide a tip that did allow the police department to identify and have filed charges against the perpetrators. So thank you once again to the Carney Police Department. Thank you to the donors and thank you to our park staff and everybody that showed up on the third that morning to help us get the park cleaned up. Wanted to provide a quick update on the dog park construction. Please report that Dusty Barham, our local contractor that we selected to construct the dog park, is out there working currently at Justice James Park and our own Carney Water Apartment are working on planning the water line extensions as well. So I'm excited to report that that project is kickoff and going well and that all of our dog owners in the area will soon have a nice, safe area to for off-leash play for their dogs. The next item I wanted to discuss and get input from the board is the 2022 fireworks show. Staff has suggested next year's fireworks display be on the first Friday before the actual Fourth of July itself and was seeking some consideration on setting the date for the Friday prior to the Fourth of July thereafter. Some of the common reasoning that when staff mentioned that to me is, you know, having it the Friday night before still allows them time to celebrate the full Fourth with their families without having to get up early and go into the park on the Fourth and picking up and then things like that. Plus, they thought that Friday nights in general was a good idea. I would felt like the attendance we had this last celebration we had on the second was probably the best attendance we've had in some time. I would obviously like to get the board's input, but also I'd like to see if Eric Marshall has anything else to discuss on the topic.
Go ahead, you guys.
Well, you ought to go ahead and give your thoughts and ideas.
Sure.
Microphone would be good.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Ryan and I had a long discussion after we had our welcome back get together really in the park to kick off outdoor activities. We think maybe that was something to do with it, that people just wanted to get back out there. But it seemed like it made for a nice, long holiday weekend for everyone where they could come out, see our fireworks show, maybe attend a different fireworks show in a different community the following night, plus have the entire weekend, extended weekend with their family to shoot their own personal fireworks off. And I know some people might say, well, later on, you're going to be maybe it could be the last day in June when we're celebrating. There's communities that do that. They set a separate date like we have had in the third, but I can tell you right now, it's getting really hard to get fireworks that close to the Fourth. We could not have, and we, that's why we moved it to the second this year, is because of not being able to have fireworks on July 3rd. So that's why Ryan and I proposed maybe doing it the Friday prior to the Fourth. And like I mentioned, later on, it could fall to very earliest as like the 30th of June or something of that nature. And I know people, we're not going to please anyone, everyone. We know that. It's a suggestion. But if you don't like this and you can discuss it with whatever, I would say move it off of the third. The worst case scenario would have it on the second every year. That way, we know we can get fireworks. It's just going to be better to get fireworks at least a day earlier. And I know you think, well, maybe what's a day? A lot to the fireworks company because we found out this year, no, on the third. They're just so booked up because of the fireworks shortages. We don't know how that'll be next year, but it's just something to consider. Worst case scenario, move it at least up a day. So if you have any questions or extra comments, Mayor, I don't know if you have, David Alderman Lehman?
Well, I guess I don't know that I really have a problem. I like, I like the Friday aspect. You know, obviously, the downside to it is that it could be in late June instead of in July. And I know a lot of the comments that I've heard have been, you know, if it's in late June, it really doesn't seem like it's a Fourth of July celebration. So, but I think we have to do what we need to do that's best for the community. So if that's moving it to the Friday before July 4th and makes it easier to get fireworks displayed, then maybe that's what we need to do. So.
Does anybody else from the board have any input or want to share thoughts on the idea?
Mayor, I actually would. I don't love, I don't love Friday nights. For a lot of us who work not in the city of Carney, getting back into town and around and then out to the venue on, by the time that all of this stuff is going on is a really tough call. And I don't think that I'm unusual in saying that. Having said that, I'm not opposed to changing it from the third to a different date. But I just think evenings during a week, a work week, and I realize not everybody works Monday through Friday, but I think having it on an evening during a work week is a really tough call.
I really am good with whichever way it goes. I do think we need consistency, whether we keep it as always July 3rd, which it has traditionally been for years and years, or July 2nd, or if we go to this Friday. But we, whatever we decide, we kind of need to stick with it for a while and not be moving it around. I do agree that for some people, it will be difficult to get everything together and to be out there on time to find a good spot. But I'm open.
Alderman Holt, we're discussing the staff's recommendation on the fireworks, possibly changing it to the first Friday before the Fourth. Do you have any input or thoughts on that suggestion?
I actually like the Friday before. It made it easier for folks. We had some people talking about how it kind of got their, it left the whole weekend open for them to do other things. So, but I don't know what everybody else likes.
Okay. Clarification from Alderman Barker. Are you saying that the Friday is not a good idea because it's during the work week?
I think it's difficult for, if you work in Lenexa till five o'clock, it's going to be very difficult for you to get home and get and change your clothes and get something to eat.
So the strategy, you know, we've always had it on the third until this, this year we had it on the second.
Correct.
And so we didn't care what day of the week it fell on, it fell on the third. And so you're saying if we're going to consider to move to weekends, we should choose the Saturday night?
I just think it's difficult. And you're correct in saying that the third isn't always on a weekend either, but it's closer to the Fourth. So I'd probably be more apt to say, let's do it July 1st or July 2nd rather than saying, let's always do it on Friday night. Because if you're talking about wanting people to be able to attend, then you're, if you're always having it on the same date, then you have the ability for some people, oh, I'm working this year, but maybe I can go next year. Or Friday night's not good for me, but Thursday night might work really great for me. So I just think, I just think that that consistency is better. But I'm not opposed. If we, if we all decide that Friday's the best night, then, then I'll still be there.
Yeah, I don't have a real problem either way. That's just, I mean, I see your point on Saturday night too, but.
So do we then consider moving it one day to the second? Would that be?
I think we're going to have a much easier time trying to find fireworks. I really, I really do.
We've never had trouble until this year.
Right.
The only reason we had trouble is that we didn't contract in advance. So I wouldn't use that as an argument not to have, you know, I mean, we generally advance contract and that's the only, the only difference between this year and any other year, far as I'm concerned, is we, we did not, we did not plan to have a, you know, that, that event because we didn't know we were going to be out of the pandemic. And we still don't know that, really, do we?
I appreciate staff's report. I really appreciate the board's input on this topic. I think it gave staff a good direction of how to move forward. Eric, if I could just ask you and Ryan to possibly put some feelers out to the fireworks vendors and see what we have available and you can report back to the board. And then once we have some more information, we can make a decision from there.
Will do.
That concludes Mayor's remarks. We'll move on to the Administrator's report.
Mr. Mayor, we are looking forward to our asphalt contractor to be here doing cut and patch and milling overlays. And we still have not contracted with doing any of the slurry seal. We don't have any contract on that. Are we going to undertake that or not?
With the, we pulled it out because of the.
We were going to negotiate a seal coat with.
From those folks from Ball or Spring?
Anyway, we do expect these, this company to come in and commence work. So we won't have the irritation of having some private contractors obstructing our roadways, but it's nothing that we can't live with for temporary time.
Expect to see the next.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Could I get some, so we're not doing any slurry seal this year, and that's because why?
We were trying to set up with that new pressure seal company, and it just did not pan out. And that's why we're, that's why we're short of our entire budget. I think it's 40,000 that we had left over roughly.
Approximately. But we needed to build a salt dome, so.
Well, and we're going to have some extra patchwork because of tube replacements and Deckers deal on eighth and ninth. And there's some, with all the rains we've had this year, there's some other spots that are showing up that are going to need to be added to the list.
So we do expect those, those folks to be coming in town and shortly, in this week or next week?
Next week. They've had us in their schedule for the end of July since we approved the bid.
And also wanted to report that our annual audit is underway and, and we should have it completed in a timely fashion. He was in here this afternoon, as a matter of fact. So that will, will be completed in September. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to public requests and petitions. We have two items to discuss this evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. City resident Debbie Alexander is here in the room at 1705 Clear Creek Drive. And Debbie, if you'd like to come to the podium and address the board, she's requesting that the city consider amending its fireworks regulations. She has enclosed, she has shared an advanced outline of what she wants to cover. So we have that on our agenda. So.
Well, it's an honor and privilege to be with you guys.
Thank you.
I'm very impressed with how you're operating and I just really enjoy living in your city of Carney and our city. It's a beautiful place to be and a wonderful family place. We've been residents for five years and we just recently purchased our second home here. And we always discuss, my husband and I, on our way home, that we're so glad that we're in Carney. We can go back in the city and do whatever needs to be done, but we're glad to become.
Ms. Alexander, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I don't know about Alderman Lehman, but I can't hear you. Can you hear her, David?
No, I cannot.
Okay.
Oh.
Jim?
Is that better?
It should be better.
All right. Well, this is thanking you all for running such a wonderful city that we all enjoy living in and are proud to come home to each day and to have a great all-American town where things, good things are happening and good people live and great families. So I just want to use that as a tribute to our community. I don't want to come off as a disreputer. But we've lived here for five years. The firework issue is what I just want to try to hit quickly. I know that you all must have copies of what my situations are. I'm not sure how to nutshell it except for the fact that it's, it's, I think, Mr. Holt, you were the one that was helping to clarify most of what's going on is that it's difficult for private citizens down here at the lower level where we are. I know you guys have big fish to fry, but just a scary place to be. There's a lot of, I guess, anxiety that begins mid-June for us with dogs and people that get anxious about it. My dog is one thing, but her anxiety I know is shared with other people. Mr. Holt has shared with people that PTSD, go camping at Smithville and Watkins Mill to take care of their situations. It was suggested we go to hotels in KC or to board our dogs that have anxiety issues. And I know that I don't stand alone here to represent those folks and probably perhaps a minority, but I'm just trying to understand how I can better accept how things are for Carney in that situation, but also the war zone basically that I feel that I lived in. I took my dog up to my daughter's house in Holt and to get away from here. My husband came home early that night and it was already accumulating and they were sweeping the streets out to clean the debris up then. But I got up in the morning and I found debris all over my back deck, the back lawn, both sides lawn, in my driveway and wondered what had hit while I was gone. So one of the neighbors kind of said, I thought, I saw them clean. But anyway, they worked through, they cleaned up some of it. Neighbors downhill were doing it the night before. They were across the street. My point being is they sit in their driveways and in their garages and then they light in the middle of the street and then it goes probably to our house rather than to theirs. And maybe theirs, but I'm not sure. But it, it was just inappropriate to me that, the anxiety thing is one thing and then the cleaning up is another thing. I thought it was all cleaned up. There were , you know, large pieces of cardboard, small cylinders, big cylinders on our back deck. Wondered what would be like had we been sitting on the back deck at, at that point. And in the grass, on the sidewalks, out front, out back. And a couple of days later, after everything was cleaned up, I noticed it was blown down off the roof and coming out of our rain spout. So that's another issue that I thought was there. I looked at my neighbor's roof and I saw the rockets up above on his roof too. And so I think it was Mr. Eldridge, he was kind enough to give me articles about, and it were local KC articles, and the number of places that don't have fireworks at all or they don't start till like second or third of July. And I could go on about the details, but I appreciate Mr. Holt, you've given, Mr. Eldridge, you've given me the information about that. But it was significant to the point that here in Carney, I know it's a tradition and I think it's a culture that needs, needs to maintain. I don't, you know, you know, vermin it suggests that we do away with fireworks, but I think that there can be a meeting in the middle of a compromise that can be good for all. And I feel like the progression of the fireworks displays personally have escalated somewhat in the five years that we've been here. And I feel like it's like, if you have a health issue and it gets worse, you go to the doctor. If you have a leaky faucet, you don't let it drip, you take care of it. And in some, some cases, I feel like maybe due to COVID, they were making the fireworks bigger and better for people to shoot off personally. But I think it's to the point where we need to address, how far do we want to let our private citizens go with intermingling with other private citizens? I began to think about my property rights of my home. What rights do I have for my home not to be flooded that way? And if I'm not there, I'd like to see what hit my driveway in my house. I know it's hitting my deck. So what happens with that? So my proposal is not to do away with, but I think it's time, like when our kids get rowdy, we don't let them get rowdier and rowdier. We kind of draw the line and say, let's take a look at what we can do to make this better for everybody and how we're hurting others and how we need to begin to think about, you know, backing off a little bit. And so the suggestions that I came up with, I don't think that we need to go over again, but lessen the number of days. What I really like the idea is passing out maybe a four by 10 flyer that looks, you know, very Fourth of July-ish with fireworks going off and a little bit of the history of fireworks and then more specific hours, more specific do's and don'ts of what is expected on those days. I'm not sure that we should be lighting them off in the middle of the street. My husband came home approximately nine, nine thirty, Fourth of July, where I stayed at our daughter's house with my dog. But anyway, and he said that he had to kind of go around fires that were in the middle of the street going off with the fireworks. So he had to go around. And I know on our property, there was something that was about this tall and it was a cylinder. And it was right, we live on a corner, so we're more vulnerable in that way. But it was like, that's on our property. Not that I'm like, it's not that I'm really against it. It's just that I don't understand how people can come in and do those things and get up the next morning and it's okay. It's okay. And it's hard to enforce that, who did it, you know, because how are you going to identify how they got in there? But we had large pieces of fireworks and small pieces of fireworks and explosive parts and the plastic parts. And we had the sticks and we had the sticks with long cylinders on the end and the sticks with short cylinders. And I just think that there's time for us to reevaluate how it is that we can all meet in the middle and compromise the situation so that everyone can enjoy the season as we want to. And I also wondered in terms of, you know, stopping the flow of the vendors, are they selling what's legal for personal use? I just feel like it's gotten bigger, better, stronger, so many things in our culture these days that we're, we really maybe need to slow it down a little bit so we can consider the lives and disciplines of those who don't really want to go through this every year. So that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your attention.
Yeah, thank you for, for addressing the board. Is there anybody on the board that would like to ask any additional questions or comment on her presentation? Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have, I think the silers are here online and maybe they all.
Yes.
Turn on their cameras. And Greenfield Seventh Plat is, is enclosed in agenda item number 5B. Jerry Siler is seeking the board approval of Greenfield Seventh Plat, a 37 lot, single-family subdivision. Enclosed in 5B is the staff report that David can report on their July the 14th meeting held on Wednesday to obtain a quorum. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously four to zero. They recommend approval of the final plat, subject to all staff comments. And David can report on that. Also, board liaison Kathy Barker may also want to comment about it. And enclosed in 5B after discussion is a proposed ordinance that is recommended to be considered.
Any additional comment from staff?
This is David Pavlich. I'd like to comment that proposed 37 lots, the layout matches what was approved in the amended development plan for phases seven through nine a few months ago. So it is consistent with that approved updated plan. At the last meeting, at that particular meeting, the board asked for an emergency access road to be included in the development plan for that phase. And that is included in the engineering plans. It doesn't show up on the plat drawing, but it is included in the engineering plan.
I believe the fire department does for that.
Yes. I just say the board because it was included in, in the approval of that amended plan.
Thanks, Pavlich. Alderman Barker, do you have anything additional to add?
I don't.
Any questions or discussion from the board, from applicant?
Have we, David, have we gotten a hold of the fire department? Have they seen this final plat?
Yes. Yes, they, they get copies of the plats when they're submitted. I also talked to Jeff Four about the access road being included in the engineering plan.
And they're, they're fine with it?
Mm-hmm. It follows exactly what was proposed and approved in April.
Is there a way in future that we can get something in our packets that, that addresses that they've been, they've had, had time to look at it and they're approving it?
Sure, we can specifically ask that the fire marshal provide that before the meeting.
I think we need to, to make a concerted effort to include our fire district as well as our, our street superintendent in all future final plats.
If there are other questions or discussions from the board, can we entertain, I'm sorry, Jim, could you read it, the proposed ordinance by title only for the first reading?
An ordinance approving a final plat of Meadows at Greenfield Seventh Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements thereon.
Motion to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a final plat of Meadows at Greenfield Seventh Plat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-ways and easements thereon.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All in board?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And congratulations, Mr. Siler. And once again, I appreciate you working with the board and the fire district to mitigating our concerns. So wishing you another successful phase.
I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and the board and the fire department for all of us putting our heads together and getting everything put behind us.
Yes, sir. You're doing a great job. So I can't wait to see that, that next phase fill up for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to hear a rezoning request from Michael Haredia for a ten. Did I say that right, David?
Yes.
Michael, did I say that right? Haredia. For a 10-unit town home to be constructed on 201 and 203 East Washington Street. At their public hearing held on June the 14th, the Planning and Zoning Commission tabled consideration to July the 12th, which was actually held on July the 14th to obtain a quorum. With four members present, a unanimous vote approved the application to rezone 201 and. and 203 West Washington from C General Commercial District to RP3 Medium Density Residential Plan District with Concept Plan, contingent upon all staff comments. At the conclusion of the public hearing, it is recommended that the board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance. And Mr. Pavlich, if you'd like to update that?
I was going to say, should I add some comments before?
Yes, sir.
The hearing or after?
Before would be good, it helps.
Okay, before the public hearing?
Yes.
Actually, when it was submitted, the project proposed 10 dwelling units. It's actually eight dwelling units, south side of West Washington Street. So there'll be four, two fourplex units that are townhomes. So there'll be 20-foot wide units, everybody walks in. You can walk in along the street, there'll be a front door along Washington Street sidewalk, parking in the rear, there would be two-story buildings. Our comprehensive plan calls our downtown area out for mixed-use residential and even calls out townhome development in that area. So it would be compliant with the comprehensive plan. So they would demolish, there's an existing house that's been there for many years. There's another commercial, formerly a car, used car dealership. So they will demolish those buildings and reconstruct on-site.
Well, originally, this was a three-story building.
Correct.
Did we dictate to them that it needs to go to a two-story, or did they volunteer to do this?
That came about as a revision to the plan. So in the original
By whose request, though?
In the, in the planning and zoning meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission expressing concerns about parking because the units would be over 1,900 square feet in size, which is equivalent, almost equivalent to our standard single-family dwellings that we have. They also had some concerns about, well, identification of lighting on-site and trash enclosure. Those items have been added to the plan. Based on those comments that were held at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they made a revision to reduce the size of the units down from three-story to two-story. So in effect, the square footage of all the units was reduced from over 1,900 square feet to 1,500 square feet or so.
I personally really like the look of the front of this. I think it will blend in nicely. I don't mind that it came down from a three-story to a two-story. I think that helps it blend even easier in this particular area because there are not any three-story buildings down here. So it would have kind of stuck out like a sore thumb. So I'm pleased they dealt with the parking issues and it's good.
All right, we do have a public hearing scheduled for this this evening. So if you would like to speak for or against the proposed residential plan district, have you either moved forward, speak your name and address for the record? Call the floor open? See no movement?
We don't have anyone in the, in the audience that has attended specifically for that. I can't see the list.
Online, I don't believe that anyone online would be a citizen that would be testifying for or against the project, other than the applicant.
Close the floor for public comment or input? Any other questions or discussion from the board or Planning and Zoning liaison?
I think overall, everyone on the Planning and Zoning was pleased. I think both Tastin and I had said that we liked the three-story look. I mean, I know we don't have anything like that, but it's, you know, it may be coming. So we liked it, but we also were more concerned about the parking. And they have done a nice job. And we all on the board appreciated how quickly they were able to turn this around and address our concerns. And so we were very happy with the project as it is.
If there are no other questions or comments from the board, we could read the proposed ordinance by the title only, please, for the first reading?
An ordinance amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code of the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Kearney, Missouri, rezoning .58 acres from C General Commercial District to RP3 Medium Density Residential Plan District with Concept Plan for Washington Heights Townhomes.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 400 of the Municipal Code of the Comprehensive Zoning Regulations of Kearney, Missouri, rezoning .58 acres from C Commercial General District to RP3 Medium Density Residential Plan District with Concept Plan for Washington Heights Townhomes.
Motion to approve.
Move to approve on second reading?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, pull the board?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, congratulations, Mr. Heredia, and look forward to your new project in downtown Kearney.
Thank you guys very much, thanks for taking the time on the original comments. My team and I really tried to take those to heart to make sure that we had a look that everyone would be comfortable with to really highlight the beautiful city of Kearney.
Great, thanks for your time, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
We have no old business, we do have an item under new business this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have a proposed ordinance enclosed that has been drafted that would authorize you to sign slated documents necessary in securing the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. The state of Missouri still is one of 12 states that has not yet received or requested their funds for the municipalities. And we understand that they understand that they'll only have 30 days to distribute it once they accept it. So they are setting up some sort of a mechanism that allows us to apply for the funding, which these two documents, and there will be more documents, and the ordinance broadly says, in addition to those two, that you would also be authorized to sign any agreements that have to do with securing the ARPA funds. You know, Mayor, we are expecting somewhere around $1 million in this fiscal year and $1 million in the next fiscal year. And I'm sure that the state is trying to make their processes responsible as possible, I guess.
Any questions from the board on this ordinance? See now if we can read the proposed ordinance by title only on the first reading, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign documents relative to securing funds on behalf of the City of Kearney, Missouri through the American Rescue Plan Act being administered by the Missouri State Treasurer's Office.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign documents relative to securing funds on behalf of the City of Kearney, Missouri through the American Rescue Plan Act being administered by Missouri State Treasurer's Office.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, pull the board, please?
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Takes a long time for our voice to get traveled around the
Long ways down there.
The vote unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Alderman discussion. Alderman Spencer?
Just reporting on the wayfinding signs. We have heard back from Erica Ross with MoDOT, and they have been sent off to review. And then we will have to have city reps, which would be the mayor and Jim Eldridge, sign the wayfinding sign agreement. So we are feeling pretty positive and pretty pumped that we are moving forward.
I'd like to comment that MoDOT is doing everything, all signatures by DocuSign.
Yes.
So Jim and the mayor may end up receiving an email.
Mayor is very responsible of signing those. I am somewhat diligent. So that's, so the mayor, I will, I will, we have been authorized to sign that, so as soon as it comes, we can sign it.
If you see a strange email, if you see a strange email from MoDOT requesting signatures, that's what it's about, it's about the wayfinding sign. So don't delete it or throw it into your spam mail.
Call back.
Jim doesn't even give me the opportunity to throw him under the bus. He just threw himself under the bus right there.
He knew it was coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's very good news.
Do you have anything else, Alderman Spencer?
I do not.
Well, your mural on Washington Street is looking nice, so appreciate your work there, too.
Next week, there will be Girl Scouts there next week working some more on it. So I'm, two weeks from now, you'll have to be sure you peek.
Thank you. Alderman Holt?
I just want to piggyback on Debbie Alexander's, she left, I wish she would have stayed. But I think that maybe around that time, we do need to put our, a general rule, something on the water bill, something to let people kind of know because we do have some people in our neighborhood that were shooting late, who are shooting, you know,
Early.
early. So I mean, there are some people who are not following rules and maybe they don't know exactly what they are, you know, new people in town, whatever. So I do feel that maybe, maybe we do need to, I don't know about going around putting door hangers on, like she said, but I do think that maybe on our water bill, something to get that out, that hey, these are the hours and this is what we can do. I thought that was a good suggestion that she kind of had on that. So I just would like to keep that in mind for next year. Maybe that's something that we could do is that notification.
That's a good idea. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I got, ma'am.
Alderman Lehman?
Well, first of all, hello from beautiful Atrio Bartle Scout Reservation. So, you know, I, I had conversed with Debbie quite extensively via emails. And, you know, I live in Merrimack Farms and quite honestly, on July, well, actually, July 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, I have a pool in my backyard. And on those three days, I couldn't use my pool. I had projectiles raining down from the sky. I had plastic projectiles. I had leftover spent rocket casings. I literally had, on July 3rd, I had an errant mortar shell literally came over my deck around my pool and hit my shed as I was standing on my deck. And every morning after the barrage of fireworks, I had to go out in my yard and pick up projectiles and spent casings of multiple different sizes and styles before I could ever let my dogs out to do their business. And, you know, I have to, I tend to have to agree with her that this year was, this year was kind of excessive. I had fireworks going off in my neighborhood on July 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And I had fireworks going off on the 4th, though, at least 1:00 a.m. And these were not little ones either. These were ones that would wake you out of a dead sleep. And so I think, I think we may need to look at our ordinances or somehow we need to try to enforce them better. I had a neighbor up the street, literally had 12 trash bags of spent fireworks on July 5th. And that wasn't, that didn't include what was in their normal trash cans. So, you know, and of course, I've got dogs. My dogs, you know, they were, they would, they would literally shake when they, when they'd go outside to go potty because of the big mortar shells and the big percussion fireworks that were going off. And, you know, it's just, I know we're celebrating Fourth of July and our country's independence, but I think we may have gotten a little bit excessive. So I think we need to, we need to do some long, hard looking at how we can control this better. I would like to say thank you publicly to our police department for their great hard work in solving the case, client's part. You know, I think it was great that we were able to catch the perpetrators and bring them to justice. You know, we spent lots of money on that park. And money well-spent for cameras, obviously. So I think that's, I think that's all I've got.
All right, Alderman Barker?
Well, I will just add my two cents to the fireworks discussion. I love the idea of education and enforcement. I'm willing to look at the ordinance, but I think it sounds like the bigger problem is maybe education and enforcing. And I know that puts an extra burden on our police, but I know that we did have, in my neighborhood, I live in Hills of Westwood, and we had people shooting after 10 and 11 o'clock at night. I don't have, I mean, I have dogs, but I don't have that issue with my dogs. And so I'm not as bothered by it. But I do feel like if we have an ordinance, we should probably enforce that. So that's, those are my two cents.
I think that's, you know, we can visit with Chief Carey and look at maybe offering some overtime during the holidays, the busy holidays, specifically the nights after, you know, when our ordinance says stop at 10 o'clock. And I know where the, nobody in the board means that we're being critical of the police department because when there's two officers on the road, it's harder to patrol the whole town. But, you know, I think Dan and Kathy's idea of some education and a resident's idea of some education, and then us also making sure that the police department has the resources necessary to patrol better would surely help alleviate a lot of the concerns. All right, that concludes Alderman discussion. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Well, I'm going to get out, and it's only 6:19 here in Boulder, so we're going to get out and do a hike up the flatirons tonight. So everybody have a wonderful evening.
I'm kind of disappointed in the back